We're gonna a little bit after five right now, I'd like to call the meeting to order, or would everybody please rise for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cool, thanks for coming in. This is uh, oh my, emergency personnel people in front of us.
That you got familiar with?
So I'm interested to see, yeah. But first I just wanna, yeah, right, take a moment to thank the community for coming out to the polls. Um, and a little bit, slightly higher numbers than typical for the local vote, but still not where we should be. I think we're roughly nine hundred voters came out with thirty-five hundred registered in town. So hopefully, you know, in future town elections, we'll get some more people to come out. Um, and just thank you for supporting our budget and our town departments. Uh, hopefully, you know, this will all help us, you know, serve the community better. Uh, so with that, I'll move right on to our first item to discuss, uh, we're talking about the generators.
Oh, heritage, sorry.
Oh.
No, yeah, he should.
Alright.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, so the Heritage Commission requested seventy-one eighty to reface the clock.
Yeah.
On the church, and we had a discussion about it and everything, and we were gonna look into seeing if it can be used for the capital reserve, but, um, from the capital reserve, but no one got back to me from the trustees of the trust funds.
Yeah.
However, I did talk to Benty yesterday when he came in, and he said, because it's town property, he can't imagine that they would vote that it wasn't able to be used out of the, is it general building, capital reserve? Either that or from the general building line item in the budget, and the total is seventy-one eighty.
Okay.
So we just need a vote, cause the chance for fifty percent.
Yep. So with that, I'll make a motion, um, to repair the clock face, faces. What church is that?
Yep, that one.
Feel bad, I can't remember offhand, um.
New Testament.
Is it New Testament, alright, at the New Testament Church, um, you know, for the price of seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
Yes.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any further discussion?
Um, coming out of the capital reserve or the line item in the budget.
Uh, ideally it'd come out of the capital reserve account.
Okay. Okay.
If that's possible, but if we have to go back to the other one, then we will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you text me right?
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carry on.
Alright, now, generators.
Mm-hmm.
If that's okay.
Sorry. If you go by the agenda in my head or the agenda here.
Um, so where I was at with this was, um, trying to figure out a more frugal and beneficial way, like to kinda get it all done, um, and stay away from that. I think it was close to, it was over two hundred thousand, I think, altogether, like for all of the generators, the way that they're listed out.
Just under, it's like one eighty, one ninety.
One ninety.
Yeah, one ninety, yeah, um. And I don't know, do you gentlemen have any chance to mull on it and come up with any more creative scenarios?
No, before reading this, I'd like Peter's idea.
What's that? Oh, the update that Debbie just gave us? Alright, so Peter, let's hear that idea.
Well, the idea was fire and police, we would take out that extra money that was a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah.
Mine, we would take out on the capital reserve. And town office would take, come out of general building, capital reserve.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't have to look for any extra money, it's money we already get.
Okay. Now, I know that-
And talking with the guy who gave me the quotes, some of those generators coming in a lot sooner than he expected, and he gave me the quotes, we might see something sooner than like, like the town office could be right off, you know, given that. That's the single phase, and those are coming in left and right, and even some of the three phase are coming in sooner than they expected.
Okay. Alright, now, did any of you guys wanna speak to anything? Jim, Wendy, Mike, Meredith?
No, I just really am impressed that I think it's very important to resolve this, because it's, it's not only for the safety of the public, but for the safety of the personnel that are working along the office too. I mean, rolling up and doing, I don't know, the fire department with no power wipes you out.
On the twelve foot ladder.
I mean, you, literally, you know, I mean, it delays the response by minutes, four or five minutes anyway.
Oh, at least, yeah.
The mine's safety risk, the mine's safety risk.
Hmm? Right, and the safety risk, I think, so.
So where was Peter's proposal to take the money for fire and police, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
That's in the ARPA funds.
Ah, the ARPA fund, that was gonna be my, cause originally my ARPA, one of my ARPA requests was for generator, so, I, I think that's a great idea.
So there wasn't any work done to investigate, because we're not talking about powering these buildings for all year. This is an emergency situation, about cutting down the wattage to the necessities.
Well, we can't, you can't Jason, cause in what I do in there, especially during the winter when we lose power, I gotta have a hundred percent of the power.
I see where, yours is the smallest.
Well, I realize that, but, because most of these quotes are labor heavy.
Right, but, but that's not, but it is a cost.
Yeah, well, it is, but the fire department's all rewiring almost that whole building, cause it's been all piecemeal over the years. Now to get it done and done right, we have to do a lot of rewiring in there.
And we've got a lot of other electrical issues that I think that will be addressed in the process of this as well.
Exactly.
Everything's on the same circuit, it'll put stuff on separate circuits, but as far as cutting down the fire department, I don't know what you could do without. I mean, it basically lets us in the doors, lets us out of the doors, it, it's our base station where our repeater picks up and rebroadcasts. It's heat, it's electricity, it's lights, it's, um, it runs our, you know, our, our response thing for our phones, the cascade. There's, I just can't imagine what you could shut down, um, that we wouldn't need.
Well, I just find it curious i- i- in my mind, and I'm not an expert on these things, but it seems like the DPW would have the largest demand because of the tools that they use, like welders and, and the town office, um, not so much.
Well, the Emergency Management Command Center is down there too.
Right, and, like I said, I don't know how many watts it pulls to broadcast the radio.
I think the biggest expense on all of them is the switch system, isn't it?
Yeah, switching labor.
And-
What's that?
The automatic switch.
The automatic switch over is the biggest expense, and to not have that, especially on a call-in volunteer department where we're not there all the time.
Well, but- I understand it may be the biggest expense, like Peter said, labor-wise, but there is a definite step in prices when you go from twenty-five kilowatt to eighty kilowatt generators, and it's not nothing.
But they need three phase to fire and DPW.
Yeah, I see all of these.
I guess my question-
I see them all right now, I'm just talking kilowatts.
Yeah, I know, but the biggest thing is the fire department, is they got two or three main panels down there. That's why they need such a big one, cause they also have a transformer, side garage to feed some of the back panel, breaker wa- panels on the back side. And what we're doing is gonna eliminate the meter off those two portable buildings. All the power's gonna come from the garage, so you'd be saving money in the long run, because you're not gonna be paying on two meters down there, it'd be basically out the garage meter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, and that's why it's so cost, that's why that's cost is so expensive, because of the labor, and what we're gonna do to get those buildings on to the garage.
Yeah, so this isn't really just the cost of the generator.
That's right.
Yeah, and that's where, I mean, I, I think it makes sense with what you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just all the way around.
Yeah.
Well, and if we're looking at that-
But all I'm questioning is the kilowattage, and, and I base this on like a home. Typically, people will say, okay, I wanna run my furnace, I don't need all my lights, um, I want my refrigerator and my well, but I don't need X, Y, and Z, and they, you know, and that's what I, that's what my question is, is has there been in effort just to keep, keep it, because it is a standby, we're not talking about, this is what you're stuck with for the rest of the year. It's just a standby to get you through, um, an emergency, and sometimes it's a day, sometimes it's a-
I guess my question would be, if we were looking at a safety complex in the next year or two, then I understand what you're saying. But it looks like with the police department being just remodeled, and fire is gonna be there for probably ten years, we don't know what the growth is going to be as far as what else we'll have to do there. Is it worth nickel and diming at this point to save a little, knowing that we'll be there ten, twelve more years, and that's gonna be our home? Wouldn't, I, I don't-
But I don't see it as nickel and diming.
In my house, yeah, in my house.
It's not, it's serving a purpose, which is to carry you through a, a limited time span, um, so that you can provide basic service. That's how I look at generator backup, I don't look at it as keep full operation for all circuits, but-
But I don't see what, you don't see any frills and things down at the fire station that you would shut off. You know, you can't stay well for the next two hours, we shut off the base stations, open the doors, and everything is-
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about, you, you get your essentials online.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying, I can't think of anything down there that is not essential to emergency services for the fire department. If I could, I would, but I, 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 I-
And I think some of the-
We'd have to run the upstairs refrigerator, but that isn't gonna save that much to not run the refrigerator.
See, some of the cost really isn't generating, it's electrical, that's the big piece of the fire department, cause it's been making most for so many years. Just add-ons don't work after a while.
And I do understand that, yeah.
Yeah, mine down there, we just had some electrical work on, so, we spent quite a bit of money this year, changed some of the boxes and cold storage, some of the breaker panels and stuff, so there's some savings right there, that they don't have to do, which they probably would've done if we didn't do that this year.
If I could add my input, um, when these things came out, uh, this was actually done by somebody who's got a, a lot of experience in doing, installing these generators, and being able to size them for what they perceive the needs to be. And I don't think there's anybody here in this room, um, that should be questioning it.
Oh, I think it's our job to question things.
Oh, it, it's the job to question it, but not to, um, push it, let's just say push it, I mean, you're, you're saying, you know, the difference between a sixty kilowatt generator and an eighty kilowatt generator is a hundred dollars. We don't have the knowledge or the background within this group here to say that we could do two sixties instead of one sixty and one eighty.
Right. And I, if, I can't speak for Gemini Electric, but if I was Gemini Electric, I would say, what do you want? And then the customer would say, I wanna get by with the bare bones, or they'd say, we need everything, and they would price it accordingly.
Well, that's basically what I told them, you know, when we're out, middle of summer, no power, I can't work with bare bones. Just like having a plow truck with just a nose plow and no wing, that's bare bones. Look what we've spent here in this building, a hundred thousand dollars, what do we get? What are we paying for electricity, what are we paying for pro- propane down there? You know, I betched because of the heating system down there, what I ended up, a convenience, not really a heating system, it's just for my convenience. And that system I got in the garage won't even warm up above sixty degrees if I leave it on all night. So we're not saving nothing, I'm, I'm buying two thousand dollars of propane every two weeks, plus heating oil for the old furnace, so what do we say about spending that money?
I don't, I don't know about that, and that is a different thing, it's on a different level, because that's day to day. And what we're talking about is potentially some years never using it, and potentially some years using it five, six, seven times.
Well- Yeah, or it could be a week, could be a month, the ice dome is-
And we don't know, yeah.
That's right.
But even if it's a day, the, the services, the fire and police and the plows and all that, like, they need everything that's in there. They have to be able to open the doors to get to your house that's burning down, or, you know, like that kinda stuff, I, just my opinion, for what it's worth.
And those were on the public, Chief Abel, notice this, please. The, the other issue is when these storms happen, or these power outages happen, they're not caused, but don't usually happen when it's a nice sunny warm day in the summertime, and it's really not an issue, it's usually when there's a demand for service, and it actually, our demand goes up. And one of the stresses that we feel in, in these departments is, I need to operate as if, um, there is no hiccups. My demand for my service actually goes up, so I, I don't, I, I feel it's a real struggle to work with less. So, uh, having the police department or fire department generated properly to operate the best we can, and offer the best service we can to the community, is good for everybody, um, and I know there's a co- a cost associated with that, but we can't pick or choose which service we don't wanna supply with power, is it gonna be internet, is it going to be telephones? Um, at any given time, those can be called into service, and it may be a crucial way to communicate, it may be a crucial way to do business. I, I just think that if we start trying to minimize our operation capabilities, we're not really doing ourselves any justice. I'm kinda just throwing a Band-Aid on it, and I know people say that too much, but when we walk in and serve the community, we, we just wanna be able to go to work, and we wanna be able to do it efficiently. And, um, you know, the, the power generation has been an issue, from what I'm hearing, for, for a long, long time. And I think we have a chance to address it and, and, and give each department the ability to operate at their full capacity during these emergencies, during these power outages, and, uh, it's, it's crucial to the service to the community, and I can't think of one thing in my department that I can say I don't need.
How was it in the last storm?
Yeah, so, uh, the last storm, we had, we lost everything but electricity. So we were able to maintain electricity in the last storm, we lost-
I should say the last power outage.
Oh, um, well, we ran off of, um, temporary generator power, so we have a Honda, I think it's a ten thousand kilowatt.
Yeah.
So that's in a trailer, I'm, I think you're familiar with the setup, it backs up, the trailer backs up to the building. There is a quick connect on the outside of the building, in which two electrical cords are run from the generator to the, the transfer switches, if you will. Uh, I'm not sure of the terminology, uh, plugins, and, um, then it's, somebody has to physically be inside the PD to go and throw the switches from PSNH power to, um, receiving the power from the generator, and not backfeeding the lines. The only is, one of the issues with that is, is we, we could be out on the road, dealing with emergencies, trees down, wires down, car accidents, medical emergencies, fires, and that manual switch is not going to happen until it's appropriate or when there's time to do so. Uh, that's interruption in service, in my opinion.
Or you have to go get gas.
Yeah, and then we, you know, we have to keep an eye on it, we gotta get, we gotta go get gas by the five gallon. So officers are taking time to, you know, put five gallons of gas in, in the tank, put it inside the cruiser, get it back, try to fill it up. Just taking it away from what our mission really is.
Cause-
And I'm not saying that we're not willing to do what it takes to do the job, cause that's what we've been doing. But here's a chance to make it right.
But I'm curious if that generator setup you have now powers the whole building, or is it certain circuits were tapped in?
Yeah, it, well, it, it powered our existing footprint prior to the-
Renovation.
Renovation, so now we have issues where there is no generation to the booking area. And I can't specifically say which bank of outlets, but I know there's a, there's a gap in power there, if we lose power. And that's gonna eventually have to be addressed as well, cause that's our booking facility interview, uh, room. And we have a bathroom down there, uh, as well.
Yeah, and you're in a unique situation with sharing the building, but-
Yeah.
But if a ten K kilowatt generator kept you running, and now we're gonna do a sixty kilowatt.
Yeah.
This is, that's the only point I'm making.
Right, and I'm on-
The only reason we're doing sixty up there, is to get that old, up there, you know, it's twenty, thirty years old.
It's been reused.
They're not getting a new one for the PD.
It's going from D for sixty.
Okay, use them as PD.
To put it up there.
So, yeah, so it was thirty-three thousand for the PD.
And I'm not, and I'm not by any means saying, no generators are needed, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, best value for the dollar, that's it.
Well, actually, if you look at it, the only thing that's costing the town money for generators is mine and the town office. Other than that, theirs is all coming out of the ARPA money, which is free money, so you can talk in less than a hundred grand.
That's not free, but-
Well, no, but still.
Yeah, yeah.
Lessens the tax burden.
It's just not out for something else.
Yeah, I do agree, like, this whole scenario is not ideal to buy, you know, three or four generators of this size is far from an ideal scenario, um, but that's a whole nother issue for another day, um. You know, and just, you know, with working, uh, with our emergency services people through these, um, events, this year, the three events, it was, it was eye-opening, you know, just to see, uh, even what a day or two could do, and we're lucky in a lot of ways that nothing more extreme happened, um. And we were able to, you know, serve the community adequately. Um, and I know that it wasn't without substantial stress on everybody's, you know, departments, um, and those, you know, having to work in less than ideal conditions, you know, cause we're, we're able to sit home and kinda weather the storm. Um, you all are out, making sure that if we need to get to the hospital or something goes wrong at home, um, that, uh, service can be provided, you know, to the community, uh, which is invaluable. So to me, at this point, I kinda was of the mind that we weren't gonna try to even skim on, uh, repurposing that generator down there, um, and going with the newer generator for the additional twenty-two-ish thousand dollars or twenty-one something, um, just cause once, I know once you unhook something, you move it, um, that's already on its second life down there for us, um, cause I think that you had said that that was repurposed from, or bought used.
Yeah, from the hospital, from the P D.
Yeah, from the hospital, so, um.
You know, we spent probably ten grand in some of the repairs on it.
Yeah. Yeah, and so that's what, that was that point, you know, so that ten thousand dollars would've been, it would've been nice to not have to spend it on fixing something. Um, so, you know, it's gonna be five or ten thousand dollar fixes potentially, you know, going forward on that old piece of equipment. So what were your, I guess, uh, I'll make a motion, and then we'll look to, like, have further discussion on which option we wanted to go with. On that, if, you know, we do decide as a board to go ahead with these generators, um, I'll make a motion to approve the purchases of generators and all the, like, the rewiring for the highway department, the town office, the fire department, and the police department. Um, as quoted, and this is for all the brand-new generators, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, is there a second?
Can we go into discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you wanna have, go second then?
Second discussion, yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll second it.
Alright, is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, I thought we were just talking about re- using that older generator for the town office, so that's one less generator that you're buying.
Well, it's actually gonna be moved up to the police department.
Okay, wait, wait, but that's one less generator.
Yeah, yeah. Correct, uh, but then, you know, in our initial meeting, Peter had mentioned that they had just spent ten thousand dollars in repairs, and then mentioned it again.
Right, so it's working.
For now, until, you know, we have to make more repairs, and one of the reasons that we've chosen to purchase new pieces, like new trucks and stop repairing them, is that once you get to that point of, um, you know, spending five or ten thousand dollars at a WAC to fix something that's only, that's gonna cost us twenty-one thousand and change, um, brand new.
When, when was the repairs done?
Peter?
This spring, summer, took out the radiator water pump.
No, so it's, it's almost like throwing good money after that, yeah.
If, if it comes to that point, we can address it at that time, but for right now, there's no sense in spending that extra twenty-three thousand dollars or whatever it's gonna cost.
Okay. Jason, your thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, my thoughts are that we would get prices for bare bones, get us by with the services, that's what my thoughts are, I don't think, I could be wrong. Uh, to spend two hundred thousand dollars without even looking at it, just saying, you're nickel and diming, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that.
If that's the case, then what that would take is to have, uh, somebody coming in with some power monitoring equipment and see what the peak loads are for each one of those buildings, and then-
Isn't that what they did?
I think we did that.
They did do that.
We did that.
If that's what he did, then there's no reason to question it.
Yeah.
And-
And I wonder, like, uh, it's not something new, power outages, it's something we've dealt with ever since it's been electricity.
Yeah, but it's warm home.
But if you have to, if you end up undersizing, let's say the one at the fire department, and they have to raise two doors to get the trucks out, and they're limited to raising only one door at a time because of the peak loads, cause you're downsizing the generator, that's going to add an extra five or ten minutes to the response time.
I, I'm not asking for that.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying, um, and one thing that's playing into my mind was how we were, um, luckily, they didn't have the rolling blackouts that they had predicted, I think Eversource had said, you know, going into this winter, they most likely have rolling blackouts, and it would be these high-stress times. So it sounds like we're being queued up for more unstable, uh, power, um, sources, you know, going forward.
That's a real possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, from what we hear. So you're going with the fifty-five thousand, and then are we gonna sell the old generator that was just?
Yeah, I, yeah, that'd be, yeah, I think that'd be a better option, and try to get, you know, ten thousand dollars out of it, and, and get rid of that problem, or potential issue.
Yeah. And then how much of this funding is coming out of ARPA?
Uh, we're gonna drain whatever was left, I'm not sure those exact-
I'm sure it's about a hundred and eleven thousand.
Yeah.
So then it would leave ninety thousand pulled out of, we don't have that in building maintenance.
Oh, Peter has his highway capital reserve.
Capital reserve, we pay for mine.
And then the town office would be, yeah.
Would be the general government building capital reserve.
Then we have the funds.
Yeah.
I suppose we just voted, so we have last year's money that was put in there at least.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Kind of trying to move towards proactive, so that's where, I understand your, your concerns, but, you know, everything that's around us right now, I'd, I'd just like, uh, stability going forward for our town departments.
And if ARPA funds turn out to be less.
Oh.
They won't.
No, no, cause I think-
Um, we have a hundred and eleven thousand that we have not allocated yet, a little bit more than that, it's like a hundred and eleven and two ninety or something.
Hmm. That's tough, I said it last time it was brought to us, I said the same thing. So it's disappointing that there was no, but maybe, maybe uh these buildings are different than houses. Every circuit is essential. Meaning, I don't know.
Well, we do, we call them emergency services, so.
Well, I don't think, I guess we'll. I think I've made my point.
Yeah.
And I hope you understand where I'm coming from.
I do, I do. How do you feel about sticking with the, the new generator and listing the old one for sale, so we can get some more?
I'm okay with that, sure.
And then everything's up to par, and we don't have to have this conversation for a decade or two, hopefully.
Somebody else will have it.
I'll be us, I'll be Peter.
I guess, uh, can't recall if I put in the motion, like the different funding sources.
Uh, no.
You didn't.
All right, so just amend that to, uh-
Remaining ARPA.
Yeah.
Capital reserve, highway, and capital reserve government buildings.
Correct, for the balances.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, cool, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks guys.
Excuse me real quick, um, my name is Josh, I play in the network for the Ledger.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
Then if you could-
I always play your last name.
We're gonna be moving into uh a non-public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
And what's Peter's last name, is it just?
Goe.
Goe?
G-O-E-W-E-Y.
Bye, Jim, thank you. What was your last name, Josh?
Lacalaya. Could you repeat your last name, Peter, I'm sorry?
Goe, G-O-E.
Yep.
W-E-Y.
E-Y.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in and covering us.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, I know you don't see me much, Ashley's mainly the reporter for the news, which, but I've kind of filmed it very well, she's on vacation, but I think I met a few of you.
Yeah.
I've gone to a couple meetings, but nice to see you all again, I'll let you know if I have any questions, appreciate it.
Take care, thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, we're gonna be moving into a series of non-public sessions, uh, for personnel interviews.